All right, I'll call this regularly, need those school board to order and actually start with a welcome and introduction to our new student member who is Nirja Patel, junior at South Burlington High School. Welcome Nirja.
Welcome.
We're thrilled to have you. Thanks. And we'll look forward to your contributions. We won't put you on the spot tonight, though. All right, do we have any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to any amendments to the agenda. David?
No, no amendments to the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Do we want to talk or do you want to save it till announcements, the meetings, special meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate at the end.
All right. All right, we'll shift then to an update on the methadone clinic.
So again, I have nothing new to report. I have put a call and an email into Todd Seneber, the head of the Howard Center, just on current numbers of patients that they're saying. The last we knew it was around the 300 range, so I'm just interested to see if that's changed or what the, you know, what the expected forecast is.
So when was the last update?
It was about a month, a little less than a month ago. So in addition, again, our current legal is pending still. We're still waiting for a hearing with the environmental court. And again, as I've reported in the past, we have, you know, upgraded a fair amount of safety-related issues and that's actually will be on a, it's a document within your packet tonight where you can look at that. So that's all I have on the methadone clinic. I'll hope to have more the next time we meet.
Thank you. All right, we'll shift to our student rep report. Sabina?
Hi. So there's been quite a lot going on in the school. Student council is putting on their fall blood drive and that's on November 21st. It's a Thursday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM-ish. So anybody who wants to donate blood should definitely stop by. And then on the 17th is the George Kennedy Memorial Walk, and I know a lot of students are getting involved with that, so should be fun. And then recently, this Coalition for Community Service had this like ribbon making thing and it was like a competition with Essex High School. And South Burlington High School made around 3,000 ribbons, which was a ton more than Essex, so that was pretty cool.
That's not true, though.
Yeah, no.
Not at all.
Supporting women, helping bad women. And then October, the TIE French kids were here, so that was a lot of fun. I participated in that, so. And then, I'm sure you know, but the football state championship is this Saturday at 5:00 in Rutland, so yeah, good luck to them. Yeah?
We have cross-country too, right?
Yeah.
Cross-country is Nashua.
Saturday.
Saturday, that's the Rams, I think, right?
Yeah.
The ball, that's boys and?
Girls or just boys?
I think it's just boys.
Boys.
Thank you, Sabina. All right, we'll move into the superintendent's report. It looks like we have one item on safety cause.
Right, so I just, again, I provided this to the board in your packet of information. This is again something I've said I think we've been keeping track of. This list is pretty comprehensive to a lot of things that we've done to the property as a result of kind of our known information around the methadone clinic. So this report provides that to you. And then again, school safety zones, we have that on the agenda coming up, and we'll be talking about that further. So again, I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have around the kind of amount expended to date.
Just a quick question, David. Would the upgrades have been required for 400 Dorset Street regardless?
No, again, the 400 was essentially in hibernation. You know, we had, I think there's always a little, some element of just proper maintenance, but when you turn the heat off, we drained the heat, you know, we had everything pretty much in a status hold. So in order to make it able to be occupied, these were critical things. And part of the occupation of that property was specific to safety and security on the north or on the southeast corner of our property. And so we would not have been, we would not, I would not have moved them at this, at that point unless for the methadone clinic going in, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. All right, we'll move to agenda item number eight, the investment committee and investment policy. John?
Yes, I'd like to take a moment and introduce Pat Blizzard and John Waite of SEI.
Welcome.
We, this is their first time to, as our investment advisors, to be here and we, in front of the board and Julie and Brenda Baylam, we're on our selection committee. So anyway, this is their introduction and we can talk about investment committees and that kind of thing. So it's kind of overview, so go ahead.
Great. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much. And thank you for selecting SEI. We appreciate it for this long-term relationship together. As John mentioned, my name is Pat Blizzard. I'm the relationship manager on the account, so really just kind of the go-to person on the account. And John's going to speak in a minute so he can introduce more about what he does on his side. We do have a presentation here and I want to, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'll go through some of it briefly. We'll focus on short-term returns because we only have two months of history together at this point in time. A lot of this information is ending in September, so we'll go through some of this. Starting the executive summary on page three. Again, the status as of September 30th in 2013, the plan assets were at $6.9 million and the plan returned 3.2 percent, and that's just a month of September. And the value as of 1031, just to kind of give you an update on the value, was $10.2 million. So September and October, very strong equity environments and fixed income actually did pretty well with interest rates coming back down a little bit. So that was a good scenario for the, for the plan. As far as equity markets, we'll talk more in detail about this, but we continue to see riskier assets rise. A lot of that has to do with, there is improving economic growth across the globe, albeit slow. It has improved. Things are looking up a little bit there. And also, it has to do a lot with the quantitative using that the Fed's, that came back out and basically said they're going to continue their bond purchasing programs, $85 billion a month. That kind of surprised the market and equities rallied around that. So a lot of the market's being driven by really those two factors at this point in time. As far as strategy review, we'll continue to build on this section here as we start to make asset allocation decisions together. But as of now, the plan is very well diversified and we'll continue to look for opportunity sets to invest in areas, other areas of markets that might have a little bit more value. So John will talk a little bit more about that as well. So we'll continue to look to maximize, maximize return with minimizing risk. Keep both of those in mind. So if you go to page four, I'm sorry, you have tabs. I just have a copy here. So it's under the next tab, page four. And once the committee is actually formalized, we'll be going through this with them. And then I guess we'll figure out how, how that will work at the, your level as well. But this is the general type of presentation we'll go through. So we'll talk about the cap, you know, capital markets, various global indices here on the right-hand side. There's two different timeframes. There's the quarter, third quarter, and then there's a year-to-date period here. So you can see that US large caps and small caps led the way on a year-to-date basis. Continue to see strong equity rallies in the US side of the equation. International and emerging market equities, a little bit different story there. International came back strong in the third quarter, represented by the blue bar, the dark gray bar on my sheet. And, and emerging market equity, it's been struggling. And there's a high correlation with emerging market equities, commodities, and a little bit of emerging market debt as well. If you think of these emerging market countries, many of them are, they produce industrial-based commodities and they do a lot of exporting those commodities. As global growth slowed down, that obviously had a very big impact on a lot of these emerging countries. As far as emerging market debt is concerned, you know, there's a lot of turmoil out there right now, right? We had political unrest in Turkey. We had what's going on in Syria right now. We have Brazil with 6.4 percent inflation and very low growth. So there's, you know, the emerging markets are, they've been, they've taken a hit over the last several years, actually down about 60 percent from their early 2011 highs. So, so that might present a, an opportunity set for us going forward. And those are some of the things that we look for to take advantage of those opportunity sets when you start to see strong valuations in markets like that. As far as equity to fixed, obviously the equities are outperforming strongly in a fixed income side of the equation. Not a whole lot to talk about there, right? We're in a very low interest rate environment. You're not getting a whole lot, not getting a lot of bang for your buck in the, as far as the investment grade, fixed income securities with investment grade securities having negative return on a year-to-date basis. On page five, I touched on this briefly. Really, there's a lot of uncertainty out there, a lot of political headwinds. Won't go too much into these charts here. The left-hand side shows the policy uncertainty index here. And basically, every one of these peaks, you see a tremendous amount of volatility under the equity markets. So we had, if you remember, 2011, a debt ceiling issue. Equity markets responded strongly to that, had a pretty strong sell-off. Then we had the fiscal cliff come upon us. And then more recently, we just had the Fed come out and obviously the government shut down for two and a half weeks. And then there was uncertainty around the debt ceiling, what was going to happen there. So a short-term Band-Aid, they pushed that off till January, February. So we're going to be revisiting this very soon again. So again, we could experience more volatility going forward on a go-forward basis until some of these things are resolved for a longer period of time. But so far, the volatility has been mostly to the upside, so it's not a bad thing necessarily. On page six, equity markets in general. Really, what this is saying here is defensive versus cyclical type stocks. Defensive stocks, think of your utility stocks, higher dividend-earning stocks. Those stocks have done very well because of the low fixed income and interest rate environment where we're in. People were seeking yield, retirement income, and as a result of that, we saw a strong rally in defensive-type securities for quite some time. Until recently, we have seen a pullback and more of a focus on those cyclical-type securities, which really do better in a stronger economic environment as things start to improve. Think of your automakers, right? The automakers doing pretty well right now as economic activity picks up. On page seven, this is the fixed income environment, and it's been quite a ride. The 10-year US Treasury yield was at 1.63 percent back in early May. And it actually went as high as 3 percent, and that was right before the Fed came out and basically said they were not going to begin to taper the debt purchasing program. So, so it's been quite a ride, and that's a pretty big swing in a 10-year yield. Obviously, that has a big impact on any fixed income instruments you have. They'll have negative returns in that type of environment. More recently, it's pulled back. I think as of today, it was at 2.64, so right around the 2.61 where it closed at the end of the third quarter. We continue to look for opportunity sets within these asset classes. You know, US Treasuries are very expensive right now, so we look for opportunities in other asset classes like your corporate bonds, your asset-backed securities, mortgage-backed securities. There is definitely some strong valuations there, and that's been helping the portfolio as a whole for the short period of time we've been invested in, and year-to-date for clients that have been with us for a while, so. Under the next tab, we have the portfolio review. And this is really just a snapshot of, on the top right-hand side, we have the various asset classes, your US equity, your fixed income, world equity, cash and equivalents. And then on the bottom, we have it broken out by mutual funds. Okay, so here you see SEI Core Fixed Income Mutual Fund. Well, part of the reason we were hired is because we're a manager of managers. So we go out and we select managers to be implemented within these funds. So it's not just one fund, one manager. There are several managers lined up in each one of these individual mutual funds. So we constantly monitor those managers. We give them a specific allocation in the portfolio. We can reweight them. And then also, we can make the final determination to fire a manager. All of our managers are on 30-day contracts, 30-day renewable contracts, so we can fire them in a moment's notice.
No pressure there.
No pressure for the, for the managers in that environment. So $6.9 million at the end of September. And on page 10, the, we have the one-month return. It was at 3.2 percent, pretty much right in line with the index, a little above the index there for the one-month period. And I do have a portfolio note here, and I apologize because the return on here is incorrect. It's 2.9 percent. It's closer to 3 percent. And that's an estimated October return. It's an oversight on my part, so I apologize. I wish it was 8.9 percent for the month of October. We could go all cash, right? You already hit your actuarial assumption rate and then And then finally, on page 11, this is just a breakdown of the fund performance versus the index. Again, very short-term in nature, but we do have the one-month worth of data. So you can see the various funds highlighted in dark, in bold, and the index is right below that. So again, very well diversified portfolio. We'll continue to look for ways to optimize this depending on the health of the plan and what's going on. And John's going to speak more to that now as some of the processes here goes through for that.
Thank you, and good evening. My, my name's John Waite. I'm a member of the advice team at SEI. And my role will be primarily work with the school district to understand what your goals and objectives are for this pension plan, and then help you structure portfolios across the entire portfolio, how much in fixed income, how much in equity, and what other asset classes we may want to incorporate there to help meet your goals and objectives. And so if we flip ahead to page 15, I'm not going to go into a lot of depth here, but on 15, I outlined some information. I gathered the actuarial evaluation from your current actuary, and I summarized much of that here. In the upper left-hand corner, I note the plan is open and active. I understand that there's been a recent change and the plan is now closed to new entrants. So this is the type of information that I'll incorporate into my recommendations to the district as we, as we move forward. What I see as I look at this page, looking at the bottom of that middle column, funded status, the blue column, we have a plan that's 60 percent, 61, 66 percent funded, depending on what metric we're looking at. So we have a deficit to overcome. Bottom left-hand corner, we've got a 12 percent hurdle rate to maintain our funded status. So we're going to need more than that in order to close the gap. But we know we're, the contributions are running in the $700,000 range, which are also about 12 percent. So the returns are going to help us close this, this gap over time as well. What will help me in structuring portfolios as we move forward and working with the retirement committee is understanding if there are any other goals that the board has for this pension plan. I look at it and I see, we've got that deficit we want to close. We've got a 7 percent actuarial rate. We want to make sure to support that. And we want to make sure to balance the risk and return profile. But if the board is looking for additional return and is willing to accept additional risk, or if the, the board is, would like to minimize risk and is willing to take a lower return, these are the types of information that would help me structure portfolios in working with the retirement committee for recommendations.
Do you know what return you assume for the actuarial side?
The actuary is currently using a 7 percent return assumption and has been for at least a couple of years, the last couple of valuations I've been able to find. And your current portfolio is on page, I think it's 18, outlined here. It's a portfolio 60 percent equity. Is it 18? Can't read these small numbers. 60 percent equity, 17. 17, yeah. And 40 percent fixed income. And you can see at the bottom of this column, I've got expected return short-term over the next 10 years, 6.4 percent. Expected return long-term equilibrium, life of the plan, and this is what we would use to support the actuarial rate of 7.9. So we've got a nice margin there. And one consideration is looking at a portfolio with lower risk. Because we can't accept a lower return and still meet our actuarial rate, we also want to consider that we've got an underfunded plan. We would like to return, the market to help us close that gap over the business side. We're not looking for a short-term, quick solve here, but we've got a long-term plan in place for funding this plan, this pension. And so we'll want to look at that balance. But if there's some, something else that I should be considering or meaning toward in our recommendations, that would help.
John, what's maybe a question to come up. What's our status in terms of developing a committee?
Well, that's, that's something we should, we should discuss and probably the board should decide based on discussion tonight and a recommendation after you leave. We, historically, it's been the business office has worked with, a couple, three of us in the business office have done the work and come to the board annually. And you've never seen an investment advisor. I don't, Elizabeth, you haven't, have you? So when we looked at, worked with the city, they have a pension committee of, I think, eight people. A lot of representation there. But I, my thought is that still a business office representative is critical. An interested employee would be a good thing to have, and either a board member or a citizen who's, who's interested. I don't think we need a big committee, but I think that, that sharing the responsibility and sharing the input would be helpful. And then you would come meet with, with that group, and if the board wanted to see, see you directly, that's available. And if not, we develop some good feedback that could come to the board. So that's how I, I see it.
Can I, can I just ask you what your experience is with disagreements amongst the committee that you work with or committees? You know, does that happen? And if so?
Quite often.
Yeah.
We deal with several different marketplaces, and a lot of times you'll find specifically in the union, specifically union markets where you have managers, there's a lot of disagreements there. So, but you know, it's good. I mean, it's good for them to come to a middle ground and help make decisions.
Some of it is, is education. Make sure everybody understands what the trade-offs are. And I think my experience, our experience has been that through education and, and just some of the analysis that I'll be able to bring to the commission to look at what the trade-offs are for the school district on different decisions. And also that I'll come and provide a firm recommendation on different portfolios, rather than, you know, here are four different options. You guys go ahead and have at it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to guide the committee to make a recommendation that seems to make sense based on the inputs that I'm hearing. So agreement, we see disagreement and a lot of discussion often, but I think at the end of the day, we're able to come to a decision pretty efficiently and, and on an ongoing basis. It's not going to be a portfolio that we put in place, and we'll come back and revisit in five, three or five more years. We're going to continue to evaluate this, especially with all the volatility in the market. We're going to be seeing the budget issues, the debt ceiling coming up again. We still got, the global economies are continuing to churn. So we're going to want to revisit this throughout the year, each year, and make sure we're still on plan with what the, what the board's expectations are, which may change over time as well.
So it appears that, sorry.
I'm sorry. So it appears that the overall goal that you have in mind is to close the gap as efficiently and effectively as possible, but responsibly without, without a big, any downward exposure. What critical things do you have to have from the board to help you come to a firm recommendation in terms of getting there? And do you have, do you have such a thing at this point in time?
I think I potentially have everything I need to particularly work with the committee to come to a firm decision to bring back to the board or whatever.
So you're comfortable, comfortable that you have sufficient definition?
Unless there is additional input that I'm not going to gather from the valuation report or from the committee members, that such as a strong desire to be more aggressive or less aggressive. If the board is really very focused on having a more aggressive portfolio to minimize contributions, even though it's going to be a rocky ride, then that will help us to formulate that ultimate recommendation. But typically, what I see is, the board, you stated very well, the goal is really to shut, close that gap in a responsible manner. Typically, the plan sponsor, the school district doesn't want to accept a lot of additional volatility, would like markets, you've got a long-term strategy in place, wants the markets to help over that time period. So that's, my guess is I have everything unless there's additional information the board members think now or some future time might help.
I think the one thing the board has talked about, because we're coming into a budget cycle, is, and our superintendent's really driving a, a longer-term financial stewardship plan, similar to our, our facility stewardship plan, is should, should and can we start to identify a little bit of incremental funding over a period of time, whether it's five years or some period of time, that would also help close that gap?
Okay.
We don't know yet if that's feasible, but we've talked about it because this exposure has been worse in the past. And we really wanted to explore all the options to make sure that we were being good stewards of this particular plan.
So some additional accelerated funding early on. And what I would foresee happening, if you were able to go down that path, then at some point we would look at taking some of the risk off, reducing the portfolio, the better firm. And certainly, if funded status of the closed plan creeps up and the population ages will want to continue down that path.
And I don't, I don't know if that's feasible yet, but we're coming into a budget cycle, and I'm sure it will come up again. And, you know, the underfunded pension plan is, is an issue we've identified, so.
Thank you. Yes, it's a very, very recently closed plan, so it's a long, long term. In our, our next actuary report, they have the data now, so we should be getting, by mid-December, the next readings. And that'll help you and help the board too, so.
And what is our fee structure with SEI?
So right now, I believe it's 70 basis points, so that's, pretty much includes the trust and custody, benefit payments, as well as the investment management piece.
So I assume with the defined contribution plan, that we're putting new people in, that's going to be so small for a while that we wouldn't be using an SEI until that grows?
Right. The, the plan on that is to use our, our existing 403B plan with the state of Vermont, Great West, and build on that. And there's, in order to be eligible for the defined contribution plan, you have to work for a year. And so the first contributions to that plan will be 18 months away. So yes, it's, get a little break in, in the fiscal 15. As far as budgeting, there's nothing to fund there, but the following year it'll start.
Okay.
So tell me, what do you need from the board tonight?
I, I think it was important that you met SEI in that we talked about this investment committee. I have some ideas of which I verbalize, but I'll write those down and then discuss them with David and how David wants to go with that. I, I think we, we met earlier today, and one of the key things is interest. Just to have a certain group represented isn't as important as someone who's interested in the plan and maybe has some knowledge, maybe not. But the interest, that helped me today to figure that out a little bit.
Yeah, I would, I would just say to the board, I mean, unless there's some really additional direction from you around kind of committee representation, kind of what we've heard is that, you know, John and I will work to put something together. I think, as he said, you know, we want people that are interested and have perhaps a specific interest and, and knowledge base to be an active participant in the committee. And, you know, we may ask for some written response as to why you'd like to assist us in being on this, you know, something of that nature. But for, at this point, I think just in general direction, or if we're on the right track with the committee, and any particular questions you might have around forming that, so.
I think barring any feedback to the contrary, I think the recommendation sounds solid, and we'll look forward to a specific recommendation through David at a future meeting.
Yeah, great.
Good. Great, thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nice meeting you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, school safety zones.
So let me just, I'll kick this off, but first let me just recognize, again, Martin's efforts on this has been, you know, pretty significant. He's been a very active participant, and it's come, I think, from a couple of different areas. His form-based code committee work along with the knowledge of the district and where we are with, with His form-based code committee work, along with the knowledge of the district and where we are with, with schools and safety zones as a result of kind of our current, um, knowledge of a methadone clinic. So I think that all coupled together has very much, um, been at the, at the forefront of the, the need to have this work done. So, I want to give certainly credit to Martin for his work. He's been working, uh, I've been able to attend some of the meetings, although not all of them, with, um, some of the city representatives. So, what's represented here is, uh, as a, as a letter that we think is really important, that it gets to the city, um, for consideration into the progression of the regulations that are upon them. So, with, without further ado, I'm happy to have Martin maybe just do a, provide a, an overview and a review of what's there, and answer any questions.
Very quickly, we, I did sit, I've sat down with, uh, folks from the city, Paul Connor a couple of times. Kevin Dorn was in, on one of the meetings. I also brought this up at the most recent form-based codes meeting, uh, this past Thursday, uh, at which, um, the committee voted on to pass through to the planning commission, nothing to do with this, but, but parts of the form-based code. So it looks like, uh, they're on target where the planning commission will probably have this next Monday. Uh, the form-based code, uh, material. And, as I expressed to them, and I've, as I've expressed to, to you folks, uh, the concern is that if the form-based code goes into effect, uh, the way it works is it, it, it just delineates what, uh, the structures look like, the streetscapes. It's, it's form, you know, it's, it's the form of the, the buildings and, and that will be in city center. That's probably a little oversimplified, but essentially, you know, how much, uh, glass frontage and where the doors are, et cetera. It does not bar any, any uses, uh, the form-based code. That there are other parts of the current, um, land use regulations that do prohibit certain uses in, in the area that's approximately the same as city center. And I think they're going to be probably taking that up at tomorrow's form-based code meeting, whether those should continue or not. Uh, but regardless of how they end up there, uh, we've worked to come up with a, a list of, of uses and definitions of those uses that we believe, uh, if they are near the schools, uh, including, you know, there's going to be two schools affected, at least two schools affected by the, the city center regs. Uh, Central School's right in the middle of it, and, and, uh, the Middle School is right beside it, and Chamberlain's actually fairly close too. But the idea is that we want to reduce, we want to prohibit uses that would increase risk to safety of the, of the, our students, of, of the teachers, property, uh, to, to the welfare of the students as well. And, and I've, have a cover, cover memo that I've worked on, uh, that would be from the school board if, if we all agree that this is sufficient, you know, or, or you can provide edits by way of David over the next couple of days, because I would want to have this ready to provide to them either by the end of this week or on Monday of next week. Uh, and it explains what we're trying to do. And I will mention specifically the, the methadone clinic, because this, this in fact is not all about the methadone clinic. I, this certainly, you know, prompted, uh, our, our looking into this. But it's the fact that the form-based code, again, would not bar any kind of uses, uh, because that's, unless they're explicitly prohibited. So we've looked in and, and have found, uh, uses that we think that, uh, are not appropriate near schools. Uh, one of the uses is in fact, uh, medical offices, uh, to the extent that they dispense, uh, Schedule One or Schedule Two drugs. And, and that would include a, a place such as a methadone clinic. It could include other, uh, potential uses down the road, like a, a pain relief clinic, for instance, et cetera. Uh, but one of our rationales for, uh, wanting to not have, uh, a future methadone clinic, because it would not affect the current methadone clinic, uh, near our schools, is, is the, reduce the, the risk of impaired driving. And we have, uh, good information, good facts, that, uh, there is a risk from methadone clinics and, and of, of there being impaired driving. But at, in the same token, we are also listing bars or nightclubs, uh, that sell, you know, that mostly sell, uh, liquor, beer, et cetera. It's not just incidental to food, food, for instance. Uh, but the idea is that, that's also a risk of impaired driving. And specifically with respect to bars and nightclubs, we're saying to the extent they're open between eight and five, you know, during school hours. So, so we're, that's one of the concerns that we're trying to address. It brings in both methadone clinic, brings in, uh, use of bars, could be pain clinics, et cetera, uh, where we think there's a significant risk, uh, if those uses are nearby. So, that's kind of summarize where we are. Uh, what's going to happen is the planning commission, I, I, I'm not sure how the form-based code committee meeting may go tomorrow. One person on the committee suggested I, I present this to the committee to see if the committee will buy off on it.
Do they need to buy off on it?
No, no, and in fact, that's kind of, I, I'm reluctant to do so, uh, because as I explained to them last week, this is a school board initiative. These are, you know, what the school board believes are, are, uh, safety, uh, uh, welfare, uh, risks, and it's really not up to
Form-based code.
The form-based code to, to, to really weigh in on it. They'll have an opportunity to weigh in, in on it in front of, uh, the planning commission. So it will be in front of the planning commission. There's, I, I believe they're accepting it next week. Then I don't believe we're going to have any kind of hearing on the form-based codes next week, but we are going to certainly, uh, request and, and push for them to have consideration of what we have run, you know, or coincide with, uh, their consideration of the form-based codes. And there'll probably be hearings in December about the form-based codes, whether they will have a specific hearing on what we're proposing. I don't know yet. We haven't really talked to the form-based codes, I mean, to the, uh, planning commission yet. Uh, then the, uh, planning commission will forward something to the city council, and that will be sometime early next year. So there's still a lot of process to go. But I think we're in good, I, I, I'm really happy about where we are now, that we are going to be, uh, coinciding with the form-based codes as far as putting this before, uh, the planning commission. So I hope, you know, if this is fine as it is, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it yet. You know, we can, we can have this ready to go, um, by the end of the week or Monday of next week.
Kathy?
Hi, thanks. Martin, I'm so glad you did this. Thank you so much for doing that. I have a couple of questions, and I wanted to just add also, I don't know that it's, um, only a safety thing. I think there's the perception issue also that plays a part here. I mean, even, I don't know. It's like there are some things that are just perceived as, um, maybe something that you wouldn't want near schools, not necessarily that they, that they pose a risk, right? So let's say that club, um, I don't, venue, I don't, you know, looks like it has poles in there. I don't know. We might not want that close to the school. It might not be open during school hours, that type of thing. I'm, you know, there's a perception thing that you just don't.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there is, if I could just re- I mean, there, there, there are some, uh, categories of uses that are, some are, I would call, a danger of, uh, attractive use, it's like a junkyard. Maybe the poles is.
Or a drive-up hotel site.
Or, yeah, we don't have that in here. I mean, there may be an opportunity for, if there are additional, um, uses that the community thinks should be there. There's going to be an opportunity to, to say so, but, um, but the other thing is, I mean, is that it can't just be perceptions in certain, for certain uses. I mean, if, if we were trying to prevent a methadone clinic from being near the school based on perceptions, uh, that would not be allowed. That'd be contrary to the Americans with Disability Act. But we feel that we've identified specific risks, that there's evidence of, of, for instance, I think the biggest one is impaired driving. There's also good evidence that if you're bringing in eight hundred, uh, additional individuals from outside our community, people who are not in South Burlington already, who have a higher propensity for crime, uh, you know, that, that also is a legitimate risk that can be based on evidence, and that's what we have to look at, at least for that. You know, I, I agree with the other, you know, there may be, you know, junkyard, adult use is one of them that, that is perception-based as well, and legitimately perception-based, so.
Like you wouldn't want a Planned Parenthood right across the street from the school, even though I'm a huge supporter of Planned Parenthood. I don't know that you'd want that so close by, right? Not, I mean, there are things. You've just got to have a good head about what you run around your schools, and I think we should be allowed to say what belongs, what doesn't, right?
Well, we are part of a broader community, so we're, I think Martin's done some great work that's based on city statutes that have benchmarked around the country, and, and, um, really taking advantage of the fact that some stars have aligned around the form-based code, and, uh, and this, this board has become educated through the process of the methadone clinic opening up. So, um, I think we've had a unique opportunity to really create this, this, um, uh, definition of safety zones for all our schools. So, we'll see where it goes, but I appreciate the work too. Any other questions? So, Martin, um, from a next step standpoint, if, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, but may I make a suggestion that, uh, if we give people a couple of days until Friday to offer any comments, and then barring any comments, that, um, if the board is in agreement, we would authorize Martin to sign on our behalf and present this to the, um, uh, planning commission.
Sounds good.
All right, so by consensus, we do approve that. Martin? Thank you, great work. All right, we'll move on to administrative reports on enterprise services.
So, um, as you know, we have enterprise services in the district, and nutrition services, and schools out, along with the Mumsen Field, and there's a report that's prepared, uh, for the board this evening. And again, um, John and his office have put together this information, and I've had the chance to review it. And I think at this point, I'd just maybe have John just do some, a quick overview maybe of, of some of the highlights, or and, and in addition, really just answer your questions about that, and, uh, trying to be, again, you've had the opportunity and not to distance past, um, around, uh, both nutrition services particularly, and, uh, schools out. It may seem like to use, like, yesterday, some of you may seem longer, but you've, it's certainly been in front of you not that long ago. So, John?
Well, we'll work on schools out first since Lee's here to, to also present. I, first of all, the FY two, two thousand, two thousand fourteen, we're basically just getting started with schools out, but we do have results on the summer program. The first thing I did on here was to show the, kind of the history of the fund balance, that, um, while we've had a decline the last few years, um, we're in the same kind of shape that we were in two thousand and eight. And one thing, um, that needed to be said, that Lee, during some of these times in two thousand nine and ten, eleven, Lee was asking for fee increases, and, and we looked at the fund balance, and, okay, we have a fund balance. Are we going to cover costs? And, and we were pretty conservative with that, so, um, he foresaw the problem, and I don't know we've ever said that much in public before, but, uh, I've said no, before. So, I wanted to get that out there, and that's why the, the fund balance, uh, is there. The second part of this is the two thousand fourteen projection, which is, um, just information for you to remember and that we did before, the same, the same kind of, um, we reported before. And, um, we estimate that, still that we're going to come out twenty thousand dollars ahead from revenue expenses. And then on the back, the summer program is, is a completed program, and, um, the projections came in. We had more revenue come in, but we had more expenses in salary and benefits. So we, we showed a net loss of sixteen thousand dollars for the summer program. And then, um, I think that Lee in the operations will talk about the summer program and what's going on at the other, the other two parts. I know we've, it's kind of an artificial break, but we've, we've said K-five is part of schools out. The middle school, because it's new, and then summer school, so, summer's out, I mean, so.
Um, just, uh, quickly, uh, just to make note of the, uh, the, the update to the summer program, um, you know, we did, uh, we did, we did better than we anticipated, and that was due to some of the, uh, suggestions that we had from the last board meeting, looking at transportation costs, maximizing our, um, our staff to child ratio. And so we've, we have, uh, some, some good results there, even though it is a net loss. So just some updates on our program, uh, K through five, um, thanks to the board's approval of our increase, um, up to a capacity of seventy-five kids. Uh, we're now at seventy-five kids at Central and Chamberlain. Uh, we're at Central and Orchard, though, uh, we aren't quite there. We just don't have, um, as, as many kids in the school, so, um, we're up to sixty-seven. So we did withhold, um, hiring another staff person there. So, uh, we're actually still functioning at a slightly higher capacity, but with the same number of staff. Whereas the other two sites are, are up to seventy-five, and, um, Orchard will be officially at, um, seventy-five next week, when we eliminate the waitlist here. Uh, we have nobody on the waitlist for the, the first time in several years. So, um, that feels good for me, um, knowing that we're, we're meeting the needs of the community, um, at, at least this section of the community. Rick Marcott, uh, we still have a, a breed length, the, uh, waitlist over there, um, and I don't anticipate that changing much. Last I checked, we were about fifteen, um, which still is much better than it was last year, um, but. So, uh, that basically covers K through five. Tuttle, we have, um, higher enrollment than we, than we did last year, um, up to eighteen now. We did start with twenty-one. The trend that we've seen over the last two years is, is that it starts higher, and then it, it trickles down a little bit, um, and then plateaus. At least that's what happened last year. Obviously not a huge data set, but, um, uh, we did see that initial, once, once families realize that maybe they're comfortable having their children stay home, or, or doing other activities, or realizing what, what is available for other activities, uh, then that, that sometimes kids make other choices. But, um, we were really happy with the, um, the retention of our, uh, of our sixth grade students into the following year. We weren't expecting, expecting much of a, a retention, and we, um, we had a good number of those kids stay on with us. So that's, that's good news, as far as we know, we're doing a good job with the kids, because they could probably stay home, um, on their own. But, uh, they like being there. They like the social interaction, um, and the, uh, um, the homework help and the activities, that kind of stuff. So, um, we're hopeful that those numbers will keep increasing. Uh, we are running, um, Tuttle with much fewer staff than we did last year, and we, uh, do not expect to, uh, lose money there this year. And again, being a, a startup program still, um, it, it's not going to be as lucrative as the K through five program. Summer program, we just talked about a little bit. We, um, we did do better than originally projected, um, mostly just, uh, by increasing, um, our enrollment. Basically, as many kids as we, we could take, um, and, and we had a lot of, of families come out. A lot of that is largely due to our TREC, uh, programs, which are, um, it stands for travel, recreation, recreation, experience, and knowledge. It's adventure-based programs, um, smaller groups of kids, um, getting out in the community, going out and paddle boarding and doing all sorts of stuff. And then, um, there's a, a literacy component to that as well, reading and journaling. And, um, that's basically it. We're looking at, um, we're, we're just now looking at how we can, uh, improve the summer program financially. I've been speaking with other, other folks that run, uh, similar camps, and, um, we're still on the lower end of the tuition, um, scale there. So, um, I think that, that, uh, it's, it's time to, to look at ways to, to increase that. Uh, my biggest concern is, uh, creating program that, uh, lower-income families can't be a part of. But there's, um, there's ways around that, and, um, you know, creating, um, uh, some scholarship for families. So, and David and I have talked about that a little bit.
So it's a good, a good little quick segue. Again, Lee has done a, you know, and his staff, um, have just done an excellent job. I think, you know, the relationships they have with his kids, number, A, number one, are so critical to the continued, you know, service that we provide. And I think obviously the parents as well. I think there's a lot of trust there, and so just kudos both to the school program and the summer program is there. Obviously, the board's knowledgeable of kind of the summer. You know, our summer program is absolutely very vibrant. It's very connected to, you know, engaging kids in really learn, uh, purposeful learning activities, but know, engaging kids in really learn, purposeful learning activities, but as Lee just briefly mentioned, you know, we are talking about other ways in which we can pool some of our services. And so Stuart has, we've been working together, both Stuart and Joan Godak, Director of Support Services, around how can we look to, number one, make sure that, you know, there's some inclusion concept for kids that are looking at maybe some added needed help, but at the same time, some of those same children obviously could benefit from, you know, some level of participation in the schools out program as well. So, you know, again, we're, we're, we're talking, I think at the right time, and John also, John Stewart's been at the table with us as well. So, we're gonna continue that discussion and look at, again, ways in which we can most efficiently and most appropriately use our, our, our resources. So, again, some good thinking going on at this point. Lee, just a quick thing on the middle school, do we have any, any of our fifth graders currently? So, what's your makeup of the middle, what's our, what's our grade levels right now at the?
It's just six and seven.
Just six and seven, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's at the school. We do monthly field trips for the fifth graders to participate in program, see what it's like, help to transition, you know, get used to the, the facility and the staff and, and get them excited about the program. But, we don't enroll fifth graders at this time, although we've talked about that in the past.
Correct.
We're not doing that at this time. And again, with, with our waitlist being basically eliminated at two schools, there's not much of a need to do that, retain them in the program that is, you know, already generating revenue, it's, it's most efficient to keep them back here, although possibly looking at Central, moving kids up is, is still a possibility.
Can we just receive the chat for subsidies?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, we accept subsidy, and we're, we're now star certified at, at all, all of our sites. Because Tuttle's so new, it's only one, one star. For those who don't know, that's the Step Ahead Recognition System, and it, we actually get more funds for each subsidy child based on how many stars we have. So, Central has our highest rating at three, and then Chamberlain and, and Orchard at two, and then Tuttle, because it's new, it's just at one. And we're looking to get the other elementary schools up to three by the end of this year.
Okay, and for the TREC programs? The TREC program and the regular Sullivan for schools out program, are they the same fee structure, or is one a little bit more because of the?
The, the TREC camps are a little bit more expensive, and we, we actually have a, a changing fee structure for each one. So, our paddleboard camp, there's rental fees that we have to include into that, so those kind of fluctuate, but.
Can you talk a little bit about the TREC program?
Sure.
Just a little bit about some of those activities.
Yeah, we did, I actually ran a survival camp, which was quite fun. We, we went out to the Waterbury Reservoir at Little River State Park, and they gave us a spot about a mile and a half up an old logging road, just a landing that looked like it hadn't been cleared in quite some time. And we built shelter up there, we caught fish with cans that, like soda cans and fishing line and, and all sorts of stuff. Kids, we did research, search ahead of time to see how we wanted to build our, our structures and how we can survive in the wild, and we learned skills that, you know, typical survival skills, but we also learned survival skills that are important for children. So, if you, if you do get separated, contrary to what you watch on Discovery Channel, you don't wanna necessarily hike downstream and, you know, try to find civilization, you actually just wanna stay where you are and make a lot of noise. But then we did other fun stuff, like catching fish with cans and stuff. But we also read a book at the same time, Lost in the Mountain, Lost on the Mountain in Maine about a child who gets lost on the mountain in Maine. And, and we journaled about the experience, we had book discussions and reenacted parts of, of the book. It was really a, a fun, a fun camp. I don't get a lot of opportunities to really provide that direct service, so it's, it's great. We had many camps like that, we had an animal camp, a spa and wellness camp, paddle boarding, like I said, a canoeing camp, tons of them. Your boys would have loved it.
So, Ann?
Yeah, I want to go in a slightly different direction. By the way, I'd love to be able to participate in the program, can I enroll?
Absolutely. We'd love to have volunteers.
So, I'm, I'm interested in some of the financial structure, what is, so I'm not sure, John, I should be asking this question of, but the summer program seems to be treated separately from the, from the, from the schools out. Is it in fact part of the same enterprise?
Oh, it is. Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so one could, could say that the, that the schools out program is subsidizing at the present time the summer program?
That's correct.
To the extent of covering this loss, it's not going anyplace else? Okay. Second thing is, it's about a three-quarter of a million dollar operation, it looks like, revenue-wise, and it runs a balance of roughly a hundred and fifty thousand is what's expected right now. Is that fund balance there to just buffer uncertainties? Does it have a defined purpose? Does it have, do you have an objective for what the fund balance ought to be to cover these things? How's that, how's that handle? Why do we have a fund balance, okay? Why aren't we running zero all the time?
There are, there are new programs, I think if Lee went back six or seven years ago and described the program, it'd be quite a bit different in, in some respects. One area that's, is a little bit hard to manage, I think, is the transportation. We have our, our transportation service and, and bus drivers and that kind of thing, and one consideration has been, should schools out have its own transportation? We, we don't think so, but that, that buffers is there just to cover an, an emergency or a contingency.
So, it's a sort of judgment that twenty percent buffers a very comfortable place to have?
Yes, yes.
So, that would be a long-term view, you don't see, you're trying to grow this to a half a million or anything like that?
No, no. And that's, that's quite frankly why, when we had a, a fund balance of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and our prices were still, our fees were low compared to the market, we, we decided not to raise prices.
Yeah, our goal is to, to create a, a quality program that is affordable, and we're, we're still at our current rates for the after-school programs in the elementary schools, lower than the, the average for Chittenden County. So, I think that's a big part of why we have huge, a big enrollment, it's, it's a very sought-after program, in addition to being a very quality program. It's, it's really a good program, so.
Are there any anticipated uses for this one balance, other than as an emergency buffer?
We've talked a little bit about possible transportation options. School buses quite large, so with our TREC camp model, for example, if we're moving fifteen kids to Little River, a school bus makes no sense.
So, I'll just be upfront about my concern, that is, if it's there as a buffer, that's fine, and if you have an objective for it, I'm really okay with that. But if there emerges to be some use that's gonna deplete that significantly?
Right.
I would hope you'd come to the board and at least to let us know that that's about to happen, so we don't get surprised by a depleted fund balance.
And, yeah, and we haven't really talked about the, the transportation piece a while, and actually, the last time we really talked about it was when the, the fund balance was at its, at its peak, and instead of making that investment and maintaining still.
Well, I'm very happy that you have a fund balance, I just want to know why it's there, no one knows it's gonna be there.
It makes me more comfortable.
I think, you know, the other, the other thing is, there's always, I mean, the conversation around the program, it's very, very important to our, our students and our families, it's been around for a long time, we've made it whole over, over, you know, I think eight years ago, and trending, we've accounted for electricity and then things of that nature, we've really made it whole on its own. And I think fair to say, we've also, you know, been thinking, you know, a little bit innovatively, if you will, around, you know, it coming to the middle school, recognizing that there's a need there, a lot of the adventure.
If you're trying something.
No, no, I think, but, but, no, but I think it's really important for you to know.
I just love the idea that it appears to be self-sustaining, doing good things and being self-sustaining, that's great. If that changes, I think we need to know, okay?
There, there is one area that, similar to nutritional services, the business office is taking on some more responsibility of processing deposits, and, and Lee has requested in credit, the ability for parents to pay with credit cards online, and we're investigating that. And I think that'll help the parents, it'll help you and your staff quite a bit. And so, that's important, and I think we realize that with our nutritional services, we have a lot more presence there, too.
So, one of, I think the frustrations that parents have in, in our district that I hear a lot is about not really understanding about all the programs that are available, and I think about kind of your lack of interest in the middle school program and what that could be, maybe. I'll give you just an example with my parent hat on of, this is something that happened to me this week, which is, I found out quite by accident that there was an SAT math course being given at the high school for, for free, and I said to my, one of my kids, not to call him out, but like, why are you not doing that? And he said, oh, how did you find out about that? But it just so happened to pop up on EDU when I went on there for something, and I think us not knowing some things, sometimes a child needs a gentle nudge to do something, like, that's a great thing, you should do it, you know what I mean? And I think that's, I, I don't know, but I'm wondering about your marketing, I guess.
Yeah, it's a good question. This is actually, with the Tuttle program in particular, is the first time we've really had to look at, at marketing with, with there being, I mean, word of mouth for the elementary school programs has kept us afloat for many years, and, you know, when you get, I do a registration night, and there's a line around the block, and people spending the night to get in line, you know, marketing was pretty much the last thing on my mind, it's about getting those kids in the program. And then, but with Tuttle, we've, we've started to look at, well, A, we've, we've, we've sent out some notices, we, we tend to market to the fifth graders leaving, so try to get them before they leave, send out notices via the principals, and put out flyers and brochures and whatnot. And then, we're starting to experiment with different models of programming in the middle school, so more of a drop-in model where, where a child could come for four or five weeks, just on Tuesdays and Thursdays, between track and drama, you know, which we're finding that's going to be a much bigger player in the next, the next year, so. But as far as actually, you know, marketing, it's, Tuttle's, I guess, we, we try, I go into the lunchroom and try to get kids and just, you know, that's.
I think your point, your point Julie's a good one, I mean, it's, it's, you know, how are we using our social media, our website, you know, schools out has a site, you know, what are some rolling prompts that might come up? As you say, the gentle nudge that the mom, dad or guardian might say. So, you know, I think that, that's very, very important.
We are, we have a presence on Facebook and Twitter, and, you know, we just did a big event, a Halloween event, where we had middle schoolers performing a scene in a haunted school event, that we get several hundred families come, and middle schoolers, we had a lot of kids that weren't in our program asked if they could be a part of it, and we post these things on Facebook and families see it, and, you know, we've got about four hundred likes, which isn't too bad, I guess, but, you know.
I just think, I, I think especially as kids start middle school, one of the ways that parents connect is to go to those daily announcements and read through them, and I don't know if you could post something there, but I think that might be an effective way to do it.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the tip on that, actually. And, and that's, talking with, with families as they leave here to go to the, the middle school, a lot of them say, we don't even know what there is after school, we don't know what the options are, and so I try to give them as much information about our program, but just to be able to point them in the direction of, of everything, so that they're a little bit more sure of what they need and, and what's available.
The other thing, just, and the last point really is, you know, the collaboration with the, you know, the city recreation department, and there's a fair amount of, in some cases, there's, there's a lot going on, like the summertime, and so Lee has worked very collaboratively with then Tom and Todd, now more Todd, but just on organizing the, the summer. And, because again, we wanna be sensitive to not be, you know, overlapping or taking away from, and so there's been some real sensitivity to that, and, and I think the city's very appreciative of that as well. So, thank you, Lee, and I appreciate the, the feedback, I don't think there's any other questions, Elizabeth, from the board?
Thank you. No, I'm just, I know we're gonna cover the Munson Field Enterprise Fund, but I will say, I know I speak on behalf of all the board, that the spotlight that we've put on reporting out and putting some discipline around all the enterprise funds, I think has been very helpful. Appreciate all the work, and you probably knew this all along, but John wasn't listening, but, but on nutritional services, and I think this is the first time we will have seen Munson Field as well, this is very helpful information, and this level of discipline, I think, is exactly what we need to be paying attention to in terms of being able to provide services that our, our children will benefit from. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Yeah, so, again, we'll go back now to the Munson Field, this is again, the other, one of the other enterprise funds that we talk about, again, John's given you some highlights in the past, but anything you wanna highlight, John, for the board at this point in addition? Or, again, I'd open it up for the, for the board for questions. Again, first time you're seeing the Munson Field, you know that we, it is the, the turf field and a lot of those services, and again, one of the major moves, I would say, is we, you know, have an event coordinator now that's really making sure that we're taking care of the, of the field, and oftentimes, you see the lights are on out there, or people are on the field, and you often make, can quickly assume that it's our kids, but it's not. And in many ways, we have a lot of, we're increased rental exposure. So, John, anything to add?
No, I think I, I gave more detail than I normally would, but there's a lot of people involved in it outside and rental, but the only person that's really directly charged to the, to this fund is the event coordinator, Chad Wolf, because it's over and above his normal job. Every, every other part, the athletic director or my officer, it's part of taking care of the field anyway. So, that's that. And then, I thought it was important to give a little bit of history of the facility, because if you go back ten years ago, we had the two soccer fields side by side, and so there's, a lot has happened in ten years to, to make Munson Field be attractive for, like, like last weekend's football game, you know, I heard the announcer say, what a, what a great facility it is, and it is, you know, and we're not, we don't have restrooms outside, and so we don't have everything covered, but, so, so that's why I wanted to talk about the bleachers and the press box and how, how that got started, and then the turf field. And the turf field, if you go examine that, you'll see, it looks great, and then if you go to the north, I'm sorry, the east end zone, where we put progress down three years ago, you can tell the wear that's on the field. It's, it's like the grass has been cut down to green level on the field, and it's, it's needed, needs to trim over in the end zone. Try to keep it simple here, but the point is that there's only, there's a, a limited life on turf fields, and we're looking, we're at the end, getting toward the end of the life on the turf field. And we've talked about it, I've talked with Mike O'Day and, and Bart Micali quite a bit about how we are, and I've looked at the University of New Hampshire and Fields and talked to them, how, how long they last, and we're kind of focusing on summer of two thousand and sixteen to have it, have it upgraded, the carpet redone. The first, the original cost was around six hundred thousand dollars, but that wouldn't be what it would cost to, to upgrade it. We have all the drainage and the subsurface is, is ready, but it would be the rug, the, the turf itself, which needed to be repaired. The same with the track, the track was, the, the turf field was donated, and the track was, was a donation, and, and the track is, is, is in need of replacement also. You can't do them both in the same summer, so the track would be the summer afterward. And.
What's the latest segment, John, of both of those things, both the turf field and the track?
Well, the track, the track, it, we're expecting it to last, to have lasted twenty years, because it's, it's been out there since the late nineties. The, the turf field is, I'm not sure they guarantee, but it's well, we're well beyond that, the warranty, I mean, is ten to twelve years is the, is the life of a turf field.
They give you that window of, of a ten-year, but it's based on the intensity, the frequency, you know, the climate, some, you know, some folks, and we did this for a period of time where we were clearing the snow from it so we could use it. I mean, obviously, anytime you put things on it and push things over it, or walk on it or run on it, it, it changes that. So, again, we've gotten good, good, you know, good, you know, good use out of it, but again, as John says, it starts to show the wear, the wear cycle in those places.
So, in my role as financial communion? I'm really concerned about how we're gonna pay for this nearly five hundred thousand dollars over the next three or four years, okay? Yeah, the fund balance here doesn't look like it's gonna pay for it.
It won't, no.
So, my, my question is? So my question is, what's it look like over a five-year period of time? I mean, I don't necessarily have to have an answer at this moment, but what's it look like over the next five years and where's that money going to come from? And then related to that is, do the fees that we charge, do they anticipate a charge for wear and tear? Depreciation, if you will?
I think that the fees we charge is supplemental because of all the use that it's done, all the use that we have on the field, I should say, is mostly our athletic teams and our kids still.
No, I understand it's mostly district. But if you use the field, you can't not wear it, okay?
Right.
So if it isn't being anticipated, I would suggest that perhaps it ought to be, okay, in the fee structure.
There's no doubt that, you know, the turf is.
A more expensive proposition in cutting grass. That said, in the past, you know, keeping up just general turf or, you know, is expensive too. And in the past, you know, this particular, our district has had difficulty on the, on the grass that we've had in the past. We've had to go to different sites. We've had to rent other places in the past. And I'm not trying to draw that it's more expensive.
I think we've been through the justification for why we have a field, whether you like it or not, it's there. And I think it's an asset that the community seems to want to preserve. Now I'm interested in how we're going to do that financially, okay?
Well, is this?
Built into the stewardship plan is a critical component and that was.
Is it all in there?
Correct. And so that is our way of, you know, essentially having some financial forecast of, you know, these types of expenses. Right then, in the past, there was, we get to the end and then we've got, you know, what are we going to do now? We didn't have any idea. And so again, through John's good leadership and help.
I'm happy if it's in the stewardship plan.
As far as.
But I do think that you ought to look at the fee structure and make sure that you're recovering all original costs.
And I have to say, we're continuing to work on that. I think it's sometimes hard to know how much to charge, too much, if we charge too much to some of our own community members who are, you know, I'm going to say senior citizens that are out using it for, you know, track competition. You know, that's detrimental to us as well.
Well, I know at one point in time you had a fee structure based on their tightness to the district and community and so on.
Still exists.
And I think that's a smart policy, but.
The only, the only thing is, I just want to contradict on that. We, the fee is $150 for outside groups. If you're not with the school, there is no graduated fee.
You're in a route.
Right. Every, the other fields, there is a graduated fee. And that's, that's something we started when this enterprise fund came up. But you're right, I know this, this will help offset, helps offset some of the maintenance costs, but it's not, it's seed money really for, to raise the rest of the money.
So this, right now, what you've identified here is in the capital plan, correct?
Yes, facility stewardship.
And facility stewardship. And my other question was, is there any relationship with the foundation or boosters to look at, you know, creating a fund here that would subsidize this?
Well, I do know, I noted in the report that the boosters has, has a balance that they would like to dedicate to putting, putting toward bathrooms and a team room. It's about $50,000 is their balance. So, but that's not the field, right? So, answer's no at this point.
Okay.
Short lifespan. I'm almost shocked about that, actually, unfortunately, because we know it's such an asset.
When we have progress coming to do the annual maintenance, we ask, where are we? Do we need to, do we need to replace it? They always say it's out of warranty, the grass is short, and you're likely to have tears more as it gets worn out. Could we wait another year? It kind of depends on the use now, but we might have a year or two play in here, but it's the kind of thing you don't want to keep pushing out too far.
Well, if it gets really kind of rough and such, and our own players know where the bumps are, it'd be a real home field advantage. So I kind of think, you know, let it wear out and get used to it.
Well, we are privileged. We are privileged to have this. I think all of you are aware that CBU actually turned down a bond, or the voters turned down a bond for a similar field. So we're very fortunate.
Should have started with one field.
Any other questions on enterprise? Great, thank you for the reports. All right, we'll move to agenda item number 11 on policy prevention of bullying of students. This is a second reading. Want to walk us through that?
Yeah, I don't, again, I think pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if there's any specific questions.
I see that the change that I requested is in there. I thought it looked fine.
Those are the highlighted in yellow.
And I think I had a question about the school's liability if, on the third bullet point of examples for off-campus text message or social media posts. Can you speak to that?
As far as if these things happen off-campus?
Yes.
What's the risk to the, to the district? I think at this point, I mean, we include everything. I mean, I think it's so hard to know because those things then come onto our property. So again, we see that as a viable example of, you know, are going to affect our students in a, in a negative, in a negative way. Stuart?
And now it's expansion of both the brass and going on the state legislature a few years ago where they said that now is, because it used to be, if it didn't quote come in, we didn't have, but that's not the case anymore. It is our law.
It does, it does extend us, as you know, I mean, it's, we become, you know, the, kind of the detectives, if you will, around trying to figure out where the origination and all of that. But remember, I mean, our purpose is to make sure that kids are in our schools and are ready for learning and when they are clogged up with those. So again, answering your question, I don't know if that, if you have others around that.
No, that answers, I mean, a lot of this is, my question really came from some of the well-publicized cases.
Yes.
That came up recently that I was, the schools were clearly pulled into that conversation even though some of the incidents were clearly outside of the school system.
Can I ask you sort of a procedural question? How are those kinds of allegations investigated? If they don't occur on a school device and they occur somewhere else, do the police get involved to assist with that?
That's part of what the SROs would accomplish.
It doesn't absolve us from it. I mean, it's a facilitated discussion and some sensitivity around, you know, when we talk to the student, the age of the student, you know, the informing of the parents and the guardians. I mean, there's some real delicate procedures there that need to be followed, but certainly our SROs, and we're very fortunate to have, you know, that service available in South Burlington.
David? I have just something maybe I just need to be enlightened on, and that is that this policy seems to be written as a one-on-one thing, one person against another person. And it seems to me that there are instances that get reported where it's a group against one, or it's one group against another group. Are they, are they comprehended in this policy somehow? Is that situation a real situation or is it just my perception?
No, those are, those are absolutely real situations. I think that this particular policy would, would be enforced for that. I mean, if somebody's being bullied either singularly or in a larger population, a group of people against themselves, or if somebody against another person, then, you know, this policy is in place. We're in, in this particular case, we're worried about the individual and how that, how that's happening. And it's up to us then to appropriately investigate and ensure they're, you know, available for learning.
So you think a policy like this would let you deal with group situations, either a group on one or two groups against each other?
Yes.
Okay.
So this will get scheduled for a third reading?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this, just, just for my clarification, this is an update and a required policy.
Correct.
Okay. Great. All right, we'll move on to agenda item 12. We've got two executive limitations policy monitoring reports, but first on 2.8, compensation and benefits.
I don't know how you want to do that, Elizabeth. Try to talk less.
Yeah, I want to talk.
I'm trying to help, but I don't want to talk more.
Do you want to give an update, Julie?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. So Elizabeth and I. And David and John went through this report. And you can see, I guess, David, the green is the stuff we added, yes? So how do you want me to do this? Do you want me to go through each one? Did everybody, I mean, or, there's a couple of questions we want to talk about as a board. Maybe we should just go through those.
Yeah.
Just the questions, okay. So first thing that we wanted to talk about was within the detail policy number three. And the question just really came up about how we should handle negotiated contracts because, or was this, I think maybe this is part of detail policy number four.
Number four.
It's number four, I'm sorry. So, it says create obligations over a longer term than revenues can be safely projected in no event longer than one year and in all events subject to losses in revenue. So the question is, David's not really responsible for negotiating the contracts and should we hold him responsible within this or should those be excluded from this?
I thought, I guess I recall that we talked about that before. I thought it was with respect to the same detail policy. And David's not responsible for contracts that we negotiate. I mean, this is, this is.
But the problem is it didn't specifically say that in this. You know, those are long-term contracts and it didn't specifically.
Right, but it's, but this says the superintendent is not allowed to create obligations over longer term, and he's not when it's a contract that we negotiate.
Right.
So the word creation probably is the right word, right? I think, and I didn't, again, having this, another look at it, I can't create where you folks are, you know, you're the, essentially the creator, the negotiator of contracts. This, and I think Martin's right, I can't create, I can't create a contract or an obligation longer than one year.
So maybe that should go into interpretation?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just, just a comment that we made on the evidence of detail policy five is that we did make the change from peoples to SEI. So anyway, that's it. And then the, the last question for the board to consider is really, as it relates to, again, detail policy five, establish or change pen, oh no, that's not it, sorry. Overall policy, right, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Overall policy. So the question is about fundraising in the district and how we deal with that considering those people, sometimes those people are contract workers. We were thinking specifically of this gold card fundraiser where someone was representing the district without our control. Is that right, John? Yeah?
So David, you were going to check about how policy governance would deal with that?
I haven't had a chance to do that, but I'm happy to get that on my to-do list.
Is that a compensation benefits issue though, if the concern is that somebody that we, or David, or somebody hasn't actually contracted with is representing the school? I mean, that's not.
Well, I mean, it's, it's just, it's the same as having a contracted worker.
Well, the policy wording that caused us to call that out was allow jeopardy to financial integrity or to public image. So that's, that's the reason it came up. So can we go ahead and review this policy even with the follow-up on the fundraising? Where that falls within policy governance?
Can I ask a little question? So the scenario you talked about as far as contract workers, is that person contracted with the school somehow?
Well, yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to understand, okay. So it's through, who?
Well, they're a third party, essentially. They're hired as a third party.
In this case, in this case, it was the director of student activities, yes. He was, he hired, or not hired, but he made an agreement with the guy. And he's benefiting financially from this and representing the district out and about in the community.
Sure.
Yeah, I, yeah. So this is the last note on the evidence, which I just responded to, Elizabeth, I haven't had a chance to connect with the policy governance gurus if they're, if that's out there around how they handle, how they handle this, you know, particularly fundraising third party. Because again, I think it does have significance around, you know, image, you know, image and, you know, financial integrity of the, of the district.
But I guess I'm not sure I understand why we need additional policy governance input on that. I mean, if, if this is a person that you can define as somebody who's a contractor of the district because the director of student activities has hired him or her, then it falls within this policy already. And therefore you need, one needs to make sure that all these policies are filed with respect to that person.
I think that, I think that maybe a little higher elevation look at this is that fundraising is a fairly significant, brings in a fairly significant amount of money. And so how, how do we, and some of those are entered into almost friendly discussions to have things brought in or sell. And I think that it does get to the, that integrity and the, you know, the financial image of the, of the district. So it's hard to say that it's not within my purview. And on the other side, it's hard to say, you know, specifically how to have controls in this area. And so the interest was looking at how, how under policy governance is it handled? Is it all in my purview? Is there, what are, what are the reportable and compliance issues associated with the board?
Wouldn't you say you're out of compliance based on some of these fundraisers that we don't have information about?
Yeah, again, you know, to what level of a fundraiser would you go to? I mean, I think, from your reference, the gold card is one that I would say, yeah, in violation. But those that maybe don't have a third party but are out doing some things that, you know, put the district in what we would say an image detriment or, and bringing in a lot of money, I think that's also at play. And you would likely hold me accountable to that to say, you know, they got a sign that's saying SB and this is what's going on and, you know, it's hard for me not to be separated from that. On the other side, I don't, you know, how do we, how do we have controls on that? So, that's, that's really to you, Martin, around saying why I say it is my issue, part of me.
No, no, I definitely think it is your issue. I'm just trying to find, and I look at policy 2.7, which is asset protection. And one of the assets that, that the superintendent is supposed to protect, it's actually in the negative, you're not supposed to endanger, is the public image of the organization, of the school. And that's, that's 2.710. So I mean, this could fall within that. I mean, if not having control of fundraising, if that's the case, or if there's some rogue fundraisers that we can put the kibosh on or whatever, and they may endanger the organization's public image, I would say it falls under there if it really isn't a contractor. I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't still get ahold of policy governance gurus.
I mean, the easiest thing to do would be that it's a concern and it's hard to regulate, right? It's hard to have controls on some of them, not all of them. Easiest thing to say is fundraising is off, you know, it should not happen.
I don't think we need to do that.
But for some, it's hard to quantify sometimes public image and financial jeopardy. Or somebody might say, well, you know, it's a trip that kids are going on, you know, that we don't, again, there could be image that comes back to us and we don't, we don't think that's really necessary. So, you know, it's hard for me to quantify and, you know, again, there's some real examples of what I would say, you know, jeopardy here, you know, the things that need to be corrected. But, you know, where do I go with that? You know, some things I might think are really appropriate and good, others may not. I don't.
Well, is this the policy, is this the policy where the fundraising should come and the reports about fundraising should be here?
I mean, I would say, what is the board's concern? If the board's concern is that.
Jeopardizing our public image.
Yeah, if that's, if that's, then, then it goes in, if it's a contractor, I mean, if, then, then it comes under this policy. If it's not a contractor, but it's certainly something under the purview of, of the superintendent, which I would think fundraising is, then it's, I think, the asset protection. If it's, we're concerned about how we're treating the community because we're sending out people looking for money all the time, then, then there's another policy for that.
That's another issue.
If it's about treatment of our parents. I mean, but it seems like there's multiple places it could fall.
I think that's part of the problem.
And it depends on what our big concern is, I, I would think.
I think it was highlighted here, it's probably not, and it's, I think it's, this is probably not a specific place, you know, to a contractor, yes. So there's a, there's definitely those specific, if somebody's contracted, then it's in, under compensation and benefits. Makes sense. And so those I think are on one side, and then we have all of these other fundraising, you know, type activities that need to fall.
So John, was this a written contract?
No.
So it's just a verbal?
Verbal.
Okay. So why don't we take a minute, then, and go through the assessment on the Detail Policy, if we can? And Martin, I know you do a good job of going through this quickly here, but Detail Policy One, interpretation, data, and compliance.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Detail Policy Two.
Not helping out.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Elizabeth, we're behind here.
That's okay.
Okay. Detail Policy Two, yes, yes.
Any, anybody speak up if you have any issues with that. Detail Policy Three.
Yes, yes.
And Detail Policy Four?
Yes, yes.
And we're yes on compliance? Yes?
Yeah.
And Detail Policy Five, "Establish or change pension benefits."
Yes, yes.
And we're okay on that? All right, now by this, by default, we would say we were in compliance with the overall policy 2.8. This would be the place where if we feel like there's an opportunity to be out of compliance relative to fundraising, this is where we'd put it. So what is the board's pleasure here?
Well, if it's not a contractor.
Okay.
Then I don't think it belongs here.
So everybody's okay that if it's not a specific contract, then this is, it would be out, out of this policy?
And you would include contracts as verbal or written?
No, we're not including verbal contracts.
I don't think we can have verbal employment contracts as enforceable.
Right.
Well, no, I'm just saying that verbal contract with the fundraiser.
Yeah, we, we're not, because it's not really enforceable in that. So on this one, overall policy 2.8, we are reasonable interpretation, adequate data, and we're in compliance.
Can I just, as a follow-up, make a suggestion for David? In asset protection, if you could look at, when you're looking at Detail Policy Number Ten for the next monitoring report, see if the concerns regarding fundraising fits in there. Right now, it's not really clear that it would under your interpretation, so you may have to modify the interpretation as well as the evidence.
What number is that, Martin?
It's, it's, it's Asset Protection 2.7, Detail Policy Number Ten.
So who's doing that one?
Oh, that's, I don't know when that is. That's not for a while, is it?
Should we ask Delaina to put that on?
Put it on for a.
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's.
I think it's on there.
I haven't, Michael, can you turn this on?
I do.
Oh, I do, too.
Mine's right here.
Yeah.
Two Seven.
Two Seven.
Julie and Martin, February, unless you want to. We left this hole because of budget.
I'm excited I'm in with you.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
I think that's appropriate, Martin and Julie.
I think I want to change.
So wait, when is, when is, oh, it's not until February.
February, first meeting in February. So we'll add that to our to-do, or I will, on that, to see where fundraising might fall within that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, is what John thought, and we and I could be wrong.
Yep.
But maybe when we do asset management, if that's not where it fits, you can tell us where it fits.
Okay, we'll move on to Policy 2.10, Curriculum Development and Review.
So I think technically Martin and I were on this one, but we didn't meet because it was also, there was some discussion about the board going over this together. And, and frankly, there wasn't scheduling. There was not time to schedule for a number of reasons, but Julie and I did meet to talk about ends kinds of things.
I didn't do this, did we?
No. No, we were specifically looking at the ends.
Yeah, and I, just for Julie and Diane, you know, your revisions are of, so I have a copy of the revisions that, that we did, and again, that was with Stuart and myself. So I'll, I think it would be appropriate that before the end of the evening, we'll get these to you also electronically.
Okay.
But then, you know, because this is an important component, obviously, of this work, so.
Right. And we would just, yeah, we would, Stuart and David and Julie and I met, we'd like feedback. Julie and I met initially to go over some items, and then we met with David and Stuart, and we'd really like the board's input on, because it's just, it's a process. This isn't anything that's complete yet.
So do we need to postpone action on 2.1, then?
Yeah, I mean, in, in part, you know, this is, I, I think, yes. I think it's important, I mean, we could, this is post-information, I mean, we're looking at this report as kind of compliance to date, but we're also talking at the same time, you know, revisions to the ends. And that's been on, you know, that's been certainly shared with the board around how we, how we do that work. And that was both Julie and Diane's work around helping us to pull those in and giving us some feedback. And that's what's representative, is just coming around. I think that makes sense. I mean, Stuart, I don't know, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, because I really believe that the part that, I mean, we have a written curriculum, teachers are working on curriculum, we're really moving forward. It's the ends compliance that's the issue, right? If you were saying, why are we not in compliance, it's because we haven't really integrated the ends, especially in terms of monitoring them, right? That's still always the issue. So, you know, where do we monitor ends and assess it within our curriculum? Not as opposed to just providing writing opportunities.
And that was my one comment on this report.
Right.
Right.
So.
So it sounds like we'll, I don't know if we'll put this on the next agenda, but we'll take the revisions on the ends policy, review those, and marry them up against an assessment of 2.1?
Right, so on the next agenda, there's a thing called ends in action, and I would like to recommend that what ends in action is, is taking action on the ends and moving that process forward.
And you'll see that on the proposed agenda.
Do you think we'll be ready that quickly to take action?
Well, just for discussion.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a continued discussion. I think I captured fairly well what you, what you said at the meeting, and that may not be true.
Julie and Diane.
Diane, Julie, so.
All right, so we'll shift that, and if everybody got a copy of the draft, and we'll.
Can I ask what we're looking at, just real briefly? So the ends policy revision.
So this represents, again, some discussions we've had a couple of different times at the board level, although not a lot, where SB Five and Six are now being folded, if you will, into ends with some adjustments to the initial, the original ends, with updates that are associated with things such as common core, again, speaking to some of those specific things that we know are upon us now. And so that, that's really the purpose of this, to try to unify our, our outcomes desired in the district, our ends, so that we are able to, you know, to communicate with clarity, whether it's a first grader or a 12th grader.
And I think if you look at them, you'll see that this, many of the ends are the original ends. The big areas of, of change would be how to define academic outcomes as opposed to listing courses, which we put in the descriptor. And then in civic and social responsibility, moving the part about knowing about history and so on again in the descriptor, so that it's separate from, I mean, that's also a course, you know, so, but that, that's the piece. Other than that, I think you'll find, you know, and this was really as Julie and Diane and the work, you know, is that the board likes a lot of their original ends, and so this is, I think, keeps them in. I also put back the thing that the, that the, then the community would afford, for example, pieces like that, so.
So Stuart, that's the question, for the changes that we tracked about.
For the suggested ends versus present ends, you didn't put those in yellow, right?
No, no. So if you look at the document, it says suggested ends, the, the first column is the ends as I believe that you wanted me to do them. And the second column is the existing ends, yeah. And so sometimes the number sequence isn't the same, so you also need to look, you know, because it may be that it says it here is three and it used to be five, you know, but it's still the same end.
Does that, is that helpful, Diane?
Yes, yes. I could yellow them if you want, you know, on the electronic copy, if that makes it easier.
That would be relevant, probably, most you and Diane, you and Julie versus the rest of the board. It may just be confusing to the others, but whatever you like.
But within the present ends, this captures 100% of what was in there. So there, there's some corresponding.
Correct.
Whether it stayed the same or was slightly modified.
Right.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to set the agenda for the November 20th meeting.
So Delaina, is the November 20th meeting really here?
Because it says, oh, okay. Was going to say.
I missed it, I'm in.
You're going to have to give me your chair if it is.
We're so ahead of it. We're so ahead of it.
So one thing we need to add, Elizabeth, is again, our conversation with the city folks. So I don't know if you want to, need to talk about that, or?
No, go ahead.
Yeah. So one of the things, as you know, we've been meeting with, Elizabeth and I have been meeting with Pam McKenzie, the Chair of the City Council, and Kevin Dorn, the new city manager. And those meetings have been, I think, really important to us. One of the things that we, we both have agreed to is to have on our agenda, similar to what we've had actually on kind of our reoccurring statuses, as we have with the methadone right now, although we hope that will end, we want to have city-school sharing opportunities and just keep highlighting some of the things that we're talking about at, with the city folks, and just keeping you, the board, you know, kind of up to date on some of the things that we're, we're talking about. And again, we, we really feel like it's important to give you, you know, some of the, some of the details as we move forward. So we're going to continue to do that. So we'll add that to the agenda.
We can take out 2.8, right?
And 2.8 now can come out, yes.
Do we have to do a third reading?
Balling, policy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Who's on 2.0?
2.0, oh, let's see, 2.0, the second reading here in November is everyone, unless there's someone who wants to come forward, or some two.
Sounds like that'll be a group effort.
Global executive construct, yeah. Okay.
Are there any parking?
Oh, I know, we haven't, have taken some of those things off.
I, I do want to suggest to the board, based on the meetings I've been having once a month with the co-presidents of the SBA, we talked about a survey that's referred to as the TEL survey, and I'm going to forget what it stands for, but.
Me, too.
It, it is a survey that was sponsored exclusively by the Vermont NEA. They did try to get some other groups like VSBA to partner with them, so that did not happen, but nonetheless, there was a very high participation rate in the survey. It was administered anonymously online through a, I think, a national group. And the breakdown of results, excuse me, is both by our district, but it also would be comparatively within the state. So one of the things that I, I indicated to Rich Weiss and Kathy Beulah is that I'd come to the board and with a recommendation that it's, that at some future date, we might invite someone to present the results of that, recognizing that it is a source of information. And, you know, my own feeling is, any information's good, and it doesn't obligate us to act on it or to do anything with it. But given that, I think South Burlington had a significant percentage of educators that responded to it, it might be interesting for us to find out what they were solicited on and if there is information that might be meaningful to follow up on and get some clarification on.
Is that a recent survey? Because there was one about four or five years ago that we looked at.
This is within the last year, I believe.
They're, they're pretty, pretty much reoccurring, I think, over the last, four years.
Yeah, no, this was last year, so I want to say it was, it was early winter, early spring.
Yeah, well, there was another one I remember around the times that we were finishing the ends policy.
Yeah. Well, and there may be other surveys that are, that have happened, either community surveys, student surveys, administrative work. And I guess I would, you know, just ask the superintendent, too, to, to say, I think, as we can incorporate summaries, even if it's, if it's a short presentation or a written report, given that someone is soliciting that feedback, I think it's an opportunity for us to, to hear from various stakeholders within our community. And I, you know, all information is good, and we're not obligated to act on it in any way. So with, with the board's permission, I might, would I, would it be okay if I extend that invitation to Vermont NEA to, or identify, or to our co-presidents to identify someone to make a brief presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. We'll get that on a future agenda at some point, then. Good, all right. Agenda item number 15, consider the minutes of the October 16th meeting. Any changes to that? Seeing none, by consensus, those are approved. Looks like we have a tax anticipation note that requires action.
Correct. It's actually in your, at your place. You should have it. If you don't, you know.
Okay. John, you want to give us a little background on this?
Sure. It's near the time when the second tax collection comes around, our cash flow is typically low, and it is this time. The, South Burlington collects taxes on November 15th, and state law provides that they need to, to pay the district 20 days after that collection. So hence, the, the draw date will be this Friday, but the payoff date will be December 6th. So, and merchants and peoples seem to have a pretty healthy competition on, on the rate. Peoples United Bank was the winner at 1.18%. The last time we borrowed, merchants was at 1.12, so we're holding in there pretty well. So I recommend that we go with Peoples United Bank tax note.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation to go with Peoples United Bank with, for this tax anticipation note effective November 8th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on AP orders as listed? All right. And it looks like we have a requirement for board approval on an AP order?
The, the number 18, it says accounts payable, it shows two checks. It's really. It was one check for $111,287.50. That was, there were two check stubs that I put in here as backup, and, and I didn't catch that, it, it's just one payment of $111,000 that we're approving. And you have that in your packet, too.
So is there another, that only, what we have here only adds up to 72. Is there another?
No, no, it's, it was, I called out the $56,000 invoice, and the, the, the two stubs are $16,494,000, so that's, they do add up to $111,287. So that's, they do add up to $111,287.50. It's just, it's, it's typed out, there's a mistake on 18 that I didn't, I didn't catch on the, on the agenda.
For the amount, right?
For the amount, yeah.
The amount.
Okay, so.
So we should just state the amount again.
Okay. So the amount that you are looking for board approval is 111?
Thousand, 287 and 50 cents.
$287.50 payable to Howard Center for Human Services.
Yes.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the AP order to, AP check to Howard Center for $111,287?
So moved.
All in favor? Okay. We have, we have a majority with three on this. All right.
These are just announcements that need to be passed out.
I'm just going to do one here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, under announcements, um.
Those are copies for them, I don't think they have them to place, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I don't know. Um, one quick thing, Diane and I did have a chance to review the RFP for direct inspection of performance valuation systems. Um, some changes were made, so Diane and I will talk about it before Friday, get back to David, and if the board is in agreement, that would allow the RFP to be issued. Is everybody okay with that? All right, we'll do that. Um, and under announcements, I have one announcement to make before David goes on, and that is one of our own. Diane Bugby has been hired as the children's services specialist in the Vermont Department of Disabilities, Aging and Independent Living Development, Disability Services Division, and she has been promoted into that position after many years with the Vermont Department of Health, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Just saying those titles is, is kind of tiring, Diane, so.
With a cold.
Yeah.
Uh, do you want to go on to the other announcements?
So, again, just trying to capture some of the many positive things that happened. Um, the boys' cross-country team was our state champions, and they head off to New England's. And, you know, I included just some, you know, I think some important little pieces that come back to us through a variety of ways. And so, um, this was one particular parent just indicating about, you know, I would say sportsmanship, and these are some of those dispositions that we think are really important, so highlight that for you. Um, the middle school under leadership of Karen Olivetti, there's a stand, stands K2K, which stands Kids to Kids, is starting to happen, and again, you see some information on that. We have, again, um, some of our sports, other sports programs are winding down. The football, um, program is going to be on Saturday at, all the way down in Rutland, playing against Middlebury. Rebels Got Talent show is coming up. Again, this is something that many folks have probably seen in the past, but again, continues to be a really kind of exciting opportunity for folks, uh, here in, um, South Burlington. Um, I just included just some general information about our notes, again, and trying to be consistent with what we now have added to our agenda, but just some of our, our notes, um, to what we shared with the city folks. And one of the, again, I think you should just read through those. Again, a lot of the good work that the board has done, um, you know, we're trying to make sure is shared and listened to and, and used as a resource. Uh, I included the Public Assets Institute, again, just looking at kind of budgeting and those types of things. That's maybe something that folks are particularly interested or want to pay attention to, I just included that. Um, in addition, um, obviously, I'm proud to say, and not to exclude you, Dan, we know you're busy, but, um, four board members had the opportunity to go, uh, to the VSBA, VSA conference on the 24th or the 25th of this past month. Um, and I think, again, there were some really positive takeaways. Certainly for me, I was, I was happy to have board members there and, again, engaging in conversations, not just in the presentations, but also kind of after as well around how to continue to do our good work in the district, so, uh, thanks for being there. And then today, actually, I had the opportunity, along with Stuart, to go to the Rowland Foundation, and I got to say, there's about probably a thousand or more participants at the Davis Center, and this is, um, to hear Dennis Littkey, who is the originator of the Big Picture Program, and what I would say just innovative schools, the Met School. And so it was interesting to hear him, hear him today, and, um, again, I wanted to say, I wanted to charge him for some of my rigor relevance and relationships that were on there, but, um, should have started a long time ago maybe saying that. But it was, um, it was really quite moving and affirming, similar to what I think our conference was. But we, I was really impressed. We had two students that stood in front of that large group and, um, in the Big Picture Program, recite a poem, uh, speak to why it was important to her, um, kind of the before and the after for her, and, and what a difference it's made, as well as a, a young gentleman as well that spoke, again, very eloquently, and I, I took a few pictures of just, of them doing that, and I have to say, it was quite an, quite an emotional moment. We had a lot of our staff, you know, were, were also participating in the Big Picture Program, were there. And we had a large number of students that had some panel, uh, presentations as well, so it was, it was, well, it was great to hear a lot of different feedback coming from, uh, different communities that came from far away, you know, to ask some really specific questions of South Burlington and Big Picture Program. So, again, I was there till about noon, and, um, I'm just really positive of that. That's all I have.
That's great.
Hey, David, I, um, I know that you also did the sophomore advisory roundtable from South Burlington, and some of our kids presented that as well.
Yes, correct.
And, um, again, I think that's something that the board would like to see at some time.
Yeah.
Especially as it relates to staff presenting the Flying Ryan Core Principles and students doing that today, too, and that's definitely something that we'd like to be updated on.
Yeah.
Good. And, um, not to save this to last, but, um, last evening, the, um, South Burlington School Board and the South Burlington Educators Association did, uh, sign a tentative agreement for a one-year contract, and my understanding is that the SBA membership has ratified that today, and that the board has called a special meeting tomorrow evening um, at 7:00 PM at the, um, middle school cafeteria. I was thinking that was, is that?
Is that right? Uh, Delina, are we, are we, is that now back at the middle school?
In the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, at the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I know we've jumped around, and I.
We struggle to find a place.
Okay. Um, so at 7 o'clock tomorrow evening, um, we will be in a position to review the terms of that agreement, and the board would take a vote at that time to ratify that one-year agreement. So thanks to this group for all the hard work, and our teachers as well. All right, anything else?
Elizabeth, no, that's all I have.
All right. Um, I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting. Yes, Dan, sorry.
This is my first meeting, sitting in this building, on this side of the table. It is really awkward. Is there a way to?
Yeah.
Reconfigure it?
Yeah, this venue is tough for a lot of reasons. It's loud for me over here, too, with the door and the basketballs, and, yeah.
Typically, typically, we're always in a horseshoe. Obviously, we walked in out of executive session, and typically, we try to horseshoe these tables.
It's been like this before, when I've, when I've sat out there, so.
Yeah, well.
Wouldn't surprise me.
It's not an easy room. We do try to configure the tables differently. That said, it's still, I think, sound, and it's hard to.
I understand, if it's possible, I'm just saying it's really awkward.
Yeah.
It does feel awkward. I feel like I've been doing this.
Yeah.
All right, on that note, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And we're adjourned.